We made a big conversation about that.
Good evening, everybody, and welcome to tonight. I see that we don't really have any members of the public in attendance, but if any of you guys, I know that there's a special presentation. If any of you would like to address us before your presentation, any questions or concerns with the board, if not, then we'll move right into meetings. Personnel, is personnel there?
No, we just, we had some other group copies. I'm sorry.
I have to get coffee?
Yes.
How about policy? What were it for? Anything to report?
Basically, we had students come and address the policy committee about the draft code.
Oh, yeah.
So they're finding everything that they weren't happy with was the requiring the top of their shirt, the bottom of their shirt to the top of their pants, covering their shirt. And then we just discussed that it was really new policy in time that came, it was like only seven days implemented, and that everyone's still kind of working out the case and learning, you know, how to enforce it and stuff. So we also reviewed the current cell phone practices and discussed if eventually we'll need to do a policy on that. We also discussed the practice of drop to the lowest grade. That was decided to move forward, that we work and allow teachers to do that. And we're still dropping the power thing up. No, I sent an email. We learned that grading had been changed from a total point grading system, no, changed to a total point grading system across all disciplines. Our next meeting is ten ten, and one of the big goals there is to develop a survey, see how teachers, and then eventually students, are doing with the new policy, the pilot policy for grading.
Questions on that? How about finance?
Finance, we met prior to this meeting. Really, we were just looking at some of the budget implications, looking at different non-organized employees and increasing potential.
Appreciate it. Building, well, Tim's not here, and we can have a building for any minute. How about curriculum?
Curriculum did not.
Not good, okay. EDJ? Student report, we have, who's gonna go first? There's only one, is that the over one? It's gonna be you.
I guess there's a lot of excitement about homecoming. A lot of weeks leading up to it, obviously, there was the football team. I think they've got a cool, and they've been rallying schools here. Our soccer team's doing very well, they got, I think, eight wins and zero losses so far, so that's great. The wrestling team's going up to Vermont on Saturday of this week. And the music programs are readying themselves for the coming festivals, so, yeah.
It's coming along, it's early in the year, but that's it. We can switch over, we now have another.
You covered most things going on, right? Grace is filling in.
Superintendent's report?
Yes, so I'll just highlight a couple pieces from my report since you have it all there. No shortage of meetings in September. We did meet with Jason Erzary, Dean of EIC School regarding the Star Program, renefting, trying to bring some potential ideas and waiting to hear back. Also met again with Mansfield Town Manager regarding the Star Program in the given property. We had discussed kind of the town's appetite for selling a parcel, the parcel of the given property. So we're still having those conversations. I have a meeting tomorrow with our lawyer, with Shippman, to kind of talk about those, that specific scenario, and where it would fit in based on logistics of what Mansfield would need to do to sell the property, and where kind of our proposals would get into the process. For actually getting a project underway, we have to probably file a budget with the state. In your PAP, it's just an FYI for the updated teacher and leader evaluation. That process was led by Diane Hannan and Ashley Luwagel last year. It was a years-long process of working with a committee of teachers and administrators to take the guidelines from the state and to create new, what's really different of the appendices and the documents that we're using for evaluation. So the approach of the state is very different. There's no longer kind of those ratings, it's more a progression, and really a support plan for helping teachers to grow and meet their own professional goals. So if you have any questions about that, I'm happy to talk about those. We've got another meeting of that committee today. We actually changed the name of the committee, it's usually PDEC, Special Development and Educator.
Support Committee?
Well, now it's Support Committee, but usually it's just Educator Committee. I couldn't remember what to say in that for a minute. But we put Support in there because we think it's really important that through this evaluation process, it's all about learning and growing. And we want to make sure that we're supporting our staff, both our leaders and our teachers and their growth progression. Had a meeting with Hans regarding our All-Hazard Safety Plan. So the folks who are on the Safety Committee, we will be having a meeting in November to review any changes to that. Did a tremendous amount of work on that, training on that last year. So really, our documents are up to speed with what best practices for response to threats. Open House was held on nine nineteen, was a great evening, the great vibe. Couple of folks who are here, it's always a fun night to be here, and this year did not disappoint. Full day, not full day, Open House, it was supposed to say full day professional development. I was on a roll. And it's just a summary of what some of our sessions were. So you can see in the morning session, Abby Waru and Lauren Bajet, who is our new CIA coach, presented a sample summative assessment with the goal of taking teachers through the process of aligning the learning target trackers to the formative assessments and summative assessments. So everybody got a couple samples from a couple of different summative assessments that our departments run tomorrow. And, you know, every teacher was able to work in a group collaboratively, really trace that back, kind of hypothesize as to what the learning target might have been for a certain block of questions on that assessment. And then when they got the tracker, did it match? So really working with teachers to make sure that there's this ongoing process of creating, you know, beginning with the end in mind with what your summative assessment is, and then being able to trace that back to your formatives and to your learning target tracker, which has the standards on it. So got some really good feedback, they received some good feedback, and they're sure they're gonna come back, and some suggestions to move forward. Afternoon with Tim Klein, who was our Convocation Speaker last year. He is a professor at Boston College. He reached out to Lou and to me about being involved in a study that they're doing, which is expanding on last year's conversation was about finding our purpose. So how do we as educators find our purpose, and how do we impart that practice in our interaction with students so that students are here, not just, you know, learning content, but also kind of honing in on what their purpose is, what their purpose is now, what their purpose is for the future. This is taking it to the next level, really getting it to belonging. So again, well-received by staff. There are some teachers who are choosing that as a professional goal. We're gonna be receiving on going to professional development from Tim and his colleagues through the organization and through Boston College, on helping teachers to, actually a card game, so once this gets implemented, it'll be interesting. He's gonna be training facilitators first, a group of teacher facilitators who can then facilitate those activities with belonging with smaller groups of teachers. And so we have like twenty teachers showing interest. And we are just in the process now of figuring out who's gonna participate. He'll be back on October fifteenth, and on some other dates as well. In the afternoon, Ashley Luwagel and Diane Hannan, who on the T-bell document introduced that, and then Lou and I went to do an exercise on setting their goals for next year, or for this year. Professional Learning Day again on nine twenty-three. We have an AI task force that includes parents, students, and staff. And Michael Rivas and Garrett Robinson, an advanced work consultants for that, came in to address the staff about, you know, initial steps, or it's not really initial steps, you need to have some training on it last year, but kind of taking a collaborative approach to how are we making sure that students are educated in the appropriate responsible use of AI? How are we as educators looking at that as a tool that we're using and using it to instruction? So that also was very good. And then I was invited to participate and attended the first meeting of the Commissioner Superintendent and Advisory Panel, which was really interesting. I thought that initially that, you know, everybody got good, but it really was a small group of superintendents to have dialogue with the Commissioner and her Cabinet, and to, you know, get feedback on some things that she would love to feedback on, and to, you know, bring any issues or concerns that we might have felt stuck that might be coming down from the state. So it was definitely worthwhile, and thank you so much.
Thank you. Any questions on the superintendent's report? We do have a special report, but I usually don't get a special report. We have consent agenda, or asking a motion to have your reports consent agenda. Is there anybody who wants to make any changes or modifications to the agenda?
Interesting, just a question. If you weren't at the last.
You can abstain if you prefer to do that, but interesting certainly, I mean, you've seen what's been attached to this packet, so you could have all done it.
Thank you.
Question, sorry. Is there any?
I have a question, it seems sort of refreshing, I'm ready. What is our rule on field trip authorization?
For overnight field trips? No, you're not making it up at all, I just don't have the right.
I think we have something specific that it pointed, how to do with like travel agencies and stuff like that, like for the abroad trips, it was further?
Yes, because of the.
Yeah, but we also have a standard.
We do, but we're, in the past, we've relaxed it because sometimes these things don't come up until last minute. I remember there was one, I believe it was last year with the girls' basketball team, where they were invited to a program for a long weekend, and it came up at the last minute. And even though it didn't meet the timeframe, we were able to pass it and decide to.
And then, yeah, and sometimes in sports, if you don't know if they qualify, it can raise your standards.
I attract. It's a good question. I feel, I believe that these two trips, because they're in state and overnight, they're not abroad, that they fall within that guideline, so we'll check on that. But to Kimberly's point, we do see these overnight trips come up when there are, if you go to turn, when there's those types of situations with athletics. And when that happens, we, I want to say the policy states that we have the ability to.
Just with that being said, can we just flag out the girls' basketball trip?
Me what?
Can we just flag out the girls' basketball trip and consent agenda? Just talk about it.
So I'll just press it that the road basketball trip, the move consent agenda. All that means is whatever is left over after that, the motion would include those, and then we go back to the road basketball trip after passing or not passing the consent. So with that modification, does anybody want to make a motion to propose the consent agenda? Turned by Nick, third second, second by Morgan. Any discussion on that? Now, first, you vote, all in favor? Any opposed? So the consent agenda minus the road basketball trip passes, and then we give that order on the consent, I mean, we expect to go with that.
Yeah, I mean, I was just checking in the time, but it came in on week thirty, and it's for twelve. And I get that it's sports, like, I'm not trying to do anything, I just, you know, it's just one of those things where when it comes that close, I just want to give everybody the chance to look it over and talk a little bit, sure. I, again, I think it's fine, but I wanted to flag it up, clarify my concern, actually, so we don't need to do it. I think it's fine with it going.
I think this is actually the trip that last time. I guess they made effort to do it earlier.
So, okay, so you're not opposed?
No, I'm not opposed, I just wanted to verify why I didn't make a consent.
Sure, sure. Then if there's some opposition, if somebody wants to make a motion to approve the road basketball and I trip, please make that motion. Third second, Kimberly, is there any discussion on this? During that, I can put this to the board as well. Are there any opposed? Now we can go back to, in that special report, we have a list that we moved, we are going to do that today.
Okay. We're all sharing up the screen and. He's quiet, that's all we need to know, right?
Pretty much, don't listen.
It's okay. I really don't know what that sound was, I have to apologize. My goodness, I feel like I'm caught between John and Lou here. Not a comfortable place to be. Yeah, I know, as a teacher, it's not a good place to be. Good evening, everybody, thank you for putting aside a chunk of time to listen to me talk to you today about the student supports at E O Smith. My name's Melissa Tubbs, I've been a staff member here for the better part of a decade. First as a classroom teacher in the World Language Department, then I spent three years as a curriculum instruction and assessment coach, and now I'm here in front of you as the new coordinator of the Student Center and the related student supports. Oh, jeez, this is why we can't have nice things. Like you're a nightmare. As a presenter. Perfect, okay. So in the school improvement plan, which I know you're all very familiar with, our goal area three is that the school has intervention strategies to support learners. These support strategies and intervention strategies I'm about to talk to you about have already, have always existed at E O Smith, however, they existed in a somewhat siloed manner, where they worked inconsistently, varying degrees of success in different places. And oftentimes, best practices were not shared, and the right hand didn't know what the left hand was doing. So it's always easier to edit than create. Thus, I spent the last six months, better part of six months, upgrading the existing student supports and interventions at E O Smith, and pulling them together into a cohesive system that incorporates quite a bit of feedback from staff and students. So I wanted to just highlight the theory of action that goes along with this goal area three, because I think it's important that if students can access the supports, then their needs can be addressed. And if students receive appropriate learning supports, then they will be able to achieve their learning goals. So allow me to talk to you a little bit about the different facets of this system that I am at the head of here at E O Smith. First and foremost, the Student Center, which is the geographical hub of the majority of these interventions. And right around the corner there, where everyone found out my secret became open knowledge, that I keep a goose in there, sorry, everyone. However, the Student Center functions as the hub for most of these interventions, and students are placed in there for more overall support. So the more overall holistic support that is really offered for these students in the Student Center focuses on habits of scholarship, social emotional development, work completion. There is some wiggle room for academic support if they're struggling with concepts in the course. However, we have different facets of the system that really hone in on the academic understanding piece of things. The most important of which is academic study halls. Academic study halls exist in science, math, social studies, and English. They cover all periods of all days of the school week. We have some pilots going on in CTE, fine arts, and this is really where students would get academic support in terms of understanding concepts in a course or whatnot. For the departments that do not have academic study halls, their teachers are intentionally placed in their duty in the Student Center, so that's their students or students that are in those departments and need academic assistance can access them there. So we were trying, we tried to sort of use our staff very intentionally to make sure that it wasn't a question of the haves or the have-nots in terms of certified staff support. So if the student needs support in a department that does not have a dedicated academic study hall, they can come to the Student Center where the teacher on duty, chances are fifty John will be can assist them. There's a heavy world language and CTE presence in the Student Center in terms of certified staff. Peer tutoring, this is one aspect of this system that I'm particularly proud of. We absorbed all of the different peer tutoring factions that had existed previously elsewhere in the building with all their own different systems and practices and whatnot. And I worked with a huge number of students at the end of the summer to sort of more follow that into one large peer tutoring program that worked for everyone. I now have over a hundred tutors that serve in the Student Center for all content areas in addition to organization, social emotional support, habits of scholarship, work completion. Sometimes they are just a cheerleader, and that is the coolest thing to watch unfold in the day-to-day is the peer tutoring happening. We're really able to sort of harvest, like harness that magic of students helping students in a controlled sort of environment. Moving forward, we have a Conmigo pilot that's going to launch very shortly, that was put together by the AI Task Force, which I am on. We are going to have a certain number of iPads and licenses in the Student Center that are going to be linked to Conmigo. Conmigo, just to clarify, I know that there are quite a few AI tools out there that will simply give you the answer. Conmigo is not like that, it is designed to help facilitate student learning. It emphasizes process over product, and so it will be a nice sort of tool for us to leverage in the Student Center, especially in a peer tutoring scenario, to help our students that might not be as open to the pencil or the paper or anything like that. So it's just another tool for us to use, and we are very fortunate to have it sort of have fallen into our laps via the AI Task Force. So Conmigo has a writing assistant to help with more of the humanities work, and it has built-in STEM support for the STEM disciplines as well. So we're very excited to sort of roll that out in the coming months. Reassessment is one of the key tenets of the grading policy pilots that are being implemented this year. And so one important student support mechanism in this system is a way to organize and communicate reassessment. The reassessment is happening in the academic study halls and in the Student Center. I will admit that when I designed the system, I put in several hours over the summer, and I grossly underestimated the level of engagement that staff would have in terms of reassessment. So it was something that I had to sort of pivot and adjust just in time. But it is very impressive how actively engaged both students and staff are in this one particular piece of the puzzle with the grading pilots rolling out. And I would say that it has been very enthusiastically received by students as well, because I can see the relief on their faces when they come in to reassess, and they know that it's not the end-all, their first bad grade is not the end-all, the all. And finally, the REACH program. The REACH program was started by Dr. DiLoretto and our family and community liaison Omar Rosario. It is a support system for chronically absent, intruant students that really focuses on honing in on the root cause of the school avoidance. Just like anything in life, if you can arrive at the root cause for a behavior, then you are better equipped to support the student in changing that behavior, for lack of a better term. So Omar and Dr. DiLoretto have put a lot of time into developing an intake system in a way to collect and track qualitative and quantitative data over time to really make sure that the supports that we are providing these students align with their root cause, and that we are improving their attendance and getting them in the door, because getting them in the door is more than half of the battle when it comes to school. My role here is really sort of as an advocate for these students, and making sure that there is clear communication amongst the teachers of what their root cause is, and what that means for a classroom teacher. What can, because all teachers have the best of intentions and want to support these students to the best of their ability, and often when they hear what a root cause is, they say, what can I do? And so I am really the one that sort of answers that question, both in the overall, the broad strokes, and in the day-to-day. I also see some of these students for check-in and check-out. I see them first thing in the morning, and they hang out with me for a little bit, some work done, get a plan for the day, and I see them at the end of the day as well. We debrief, they decompress, maybe get themselves organized for the next day, come up with a plan for what they're gonna do when they get home, and then I see them bright and early the next morning. So as you can see, we have a really wide breadth and quite a bit of depth in our student support. Do you have questions on any of these before I move forward?
I would say the peer tutoring, it's amazing, they have a hundred students, that's awesome. Is there any training associated with that?
There is, so I, we had two days of training at the end of August, and the tutors will tell you now if you ask them. They thought it was just going to be a very quote-unquote laid-back thing, and they had not met me yet, but now they know that it was not laid-back. But I can also promise you that it was a nice blend of, okay, this is what we're doing in terms of protocols. These are kind of like the non-negotiables that I have to kind of put in place to make sure that we can move this program forward. But also, the students had a lot of voice as well, in terms of sharing best practices, in terms of what they would like to do to take the program from good to great. They were all bringing their own sorts of experiences from their past tutoring groups, and so that often made for some lively conversation. But with a month or so under our belt now, I also, sorry, backtrack. I took that training and their answers and their feedback, and made an asynchronous training module that students can still work through. I have new tutors joining me all the time. I just got an email right before this meeting of a freshman that wants to jump on board. They said, I don't know if I can do calculus, but I want to help. And that's fine, I don't know if I can do calculus either, so I stood with that. Any other questions?
Oh, sorry. Can you just tell me, how does this interface with students providing a piece, or does it at all?
So this would be, when I pitched this to the staff, I pitched it as tier-two interventions. So tier-one, as you may or may not know, would be the classroom instruction that's designed as an introductory access point to the content and the skills for all students. And if students need additional support, they would come to tier-two. In theory, you don't live in tier-two, you're there temporarily, and then you go back to tier-one, or you move up to tier-three, which is a special education referral, et cetera. However, that being said, we have students that come from their resource rooms to the Student Center or to academic study halls, simply because it's a specialized discipline, and there's help available from the expert there. We have some students who just, who are in tier-three, and they have a case manager and all of that, but it has been discovered that they receive assistance better from a peer, and so they come down to the Student Center. It's also an option for an alternate setting, so I see students all day long that are coming to assess in an alternate setting, that happens quite a bit. So there is definitely some gray area and some interplay between the five oh fours and the IEPs, and then these tier-two supports.
I don't think it's pretty fluid.
It can be fluid, there are elements of it that are. One thing that I do not compromise on is the collection of the data and capturing who comes. Oh, that's okay. And who comes to the Student Center, to an academic study hall, to what end, for what purpose, was that intervention successful, et cetera, and I can talk more about the data collection after. So it does sound somewhat fluid, and it probably. So it does sound somewhat fluid and it probably is because kids are all different and their needs are fluid from day-to-day. However, the protocols and the processes associated with the program are not, are not fluid. They're actually pretty fixed, so.
What was the name of the AI tool again?
Of that one?
AI tool?
Conmigo.
Okay, do you know who backed that?
It is Khan Academy, K-H-A-N.
Okay. Have you seen it in action? Have you used it? Have you?
I have seen it in action and I have used it as part of the AI task force. And one of the big asks, I guess, from the staff when it came to peer tutoring was that it happened in a supervised sort of environment. And so all of the peer tutoring happens in there. Same, I'm blaming this to peer tutoring because the same thing will happen with Conmigo. There will be tutors that are using it with students in a controlled environment. So I can sort of see what the strengths and the weaknesses are of the program in real time. And I can also gauge if it is helping or harming our end goal which is student learning. Yes.
So I think I had, I was envisioning the academic study halls as being a kind of ongoing option as opposed to a temporary solution. And so I was thinking of, I have a ninth grader.
Yes.
My twelfth grader had all the ninth grade study halls when she was in that grade, and small, you know, twenty kids in a classroom. But my current ninth grader has these gigantic study halls in the cafeteria and gets zero done. So is that an option for these academic study halls if they need a smaller setting to work on something specific?
So there are quite a few options for this, actually. We do not, what we call hard schedule, students into academic study halls. The location changes every day, the teacher changes every day in period to period. Students are hard-scheduled into the student center, some of whom are in there because they are overwhelmed by the CAF and they are not getting their work done and their performance in classes showing that. However, I'm going to talk in a moment about the intake form because there's a lot of pieces to this. And with a lot of pieces to a system, you need simplicity elsewhere. And so I'm going to talk about the student request form that everyone fills out, but students can do it as well. And so we have seen a pattern of some students that just would, they, they want to get out of the CAF. They know they will be more productive in an academic study hall. And they are scheduling themselves. They're doing, Monday is math, Tuesday is science, Wednesday is, you know what I mean? And so we're seeing patterns of that as well. For students who might not be the self-starters to do that, usually we see them in the student center moving into that kind of quieter area.
So that is an option?
It is an option.
That's great.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, perfect. I want to talk about some of the, some of the important characteristics of this program that make it successful because it is already successful in terms of engagement. I'll be putting that data in front of you in a moment. The first thing is the connections. I think that in any well-functioning system, you are using all of the tools and the people in the system effectively. And that is one element here that is much improved from before. We are leveraging assistive technology, teacher skills, and the power of peer connection and peer assistance in very efficient ways. And so that is something that we are hoping. I can already speak very confidently that I know it will translate to improve student performance because I'm seeing it in the day-to-day. But it's still early to get the, the real numbers, right? But that is one element of this system that already we are seeing yield a lot of positive outcomes is the connections between the peers, the teachers, and the assistive technology. The communication practices, this was something that all of the staff and students were begging for when I started collecting feedback way back in June when I first got this position, that there needed to be more consistent communication. So when anyone fills out the intake form, which can be, which touches all elements of the system and can be accessed by staff, support staff and students, it pushes automated emails to parents, counselors, case managers, the students themselves, the teachers involved with updates on the scheduling of these interventions and then on what actually happened there, the outcomes. And so that is really, a really important way to keep us accountable as educators, to keep everything transparent. It helps keep the students on track because they know that everyone knows where they're supposed to be and why. And these communication practices has also helped with my next point, which is collaboration. I, when I rolled this out to the staff, I made it very clear. They already heard it from me as a CIA coach and an educator that I do not believe in the siloed model. That seems to be the norm in high schools. I said, this is going to be one very tangible way that we move away from it. We do not need to just be thinking, I am a math teacher. I'm only worried about math academic study hall. I am an English teacher, I'm only worried about English, et cetera, et cetera. This system is going to put it all out in front of us. There's going to be open communication. And we are going to use our time and our skills to help kids in a way that works for them. So what does this mean in practice in terms of collaboration? You have me watching all of the interventions and all of the calendars for all of the academic study halls. And if a student is double-booked or if they have a peer tutoring session and an academic study hall, then I am reaching out to those teachers and we are figuring out a way to make it work. We've had really productive conversations where one teacher in one department has said, you know what? I can wait, you know, I'll extend this deadline for this student because this is something that should take precedent right now. And we don't want to stress them out by giving them too much at one time. So the teachers have really sort of bought into this because the transparency is right there and everything is very organized and efficient for them. It has led to increased collaboration in the interest of student support, which was one of my long-term goals. It is already coming to fruition here. And finally, clarity. There is nothing more frustrating, I'm sure, former student, to current students, than every department doing their own thing. And there's, there's different rules everywhere you go and whatever, you have to keep all of that straight. It's so frustrating. And you don't need to code-switch like that on top of code-switching for the, for the content of all the classes. This system, one of the reasons why I think everybody's bought into it so quickly and so enthusiastically is because it is very clear. There is one form that everyone fills out. Everyone is getting the same experience, whether they go to a science academic study hall or a math one. They know exactly what to expect when they come in to the student center, regardless of who is their peer tutor. It is the same sort of system and steps to follow while allowing for that, the important wiggle room, which is around the student needs and what works for them. So this clarity of expectations, clarity of experience, knowing where to go and what is available to you really ties into that theory of action that I was saying a couple of slides before. When students can access these supports, that's when they will find success. We always had these supports at Eosmith that they were not as accessible or as clear as they are now. Some data points to put in front of you. A lot of this system is heavily reliant on JavaScript and formulas and Excel spreadsheets that, that tell me information. And one of the most important data points it tells me that I look at almost every day after I've been running around all day is the number of students served. So since we launched this system at the start of the year, four hundred seventy unique students. These are not doubles or triples or anything like that. Four hundred seventy students in this school have received a service of some kind from this system, be it a peer tutoring session or an academic study hall or, 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 or. In terms of the forms submitted, the intake form submitted, as of right now, between intake and outcome forms, we have over twenty-five-hundred forms submitted. This time last year, when we were just piloting academic study halls, we had in parentheses, you'll see the number, two hundred thirty-five. That's how many engagements we had with this system last year. Academic study hall recommendations, over thirteen-hundred. This is not including outcome forms that are put in at the end of sessions. This is literally how many times a teacher has recommended a student or a student has asked to be placed into an academic study hall, over thirteen-hundred times since the start of the school year. Peer tutoring pairs, ninety-four, many of which are recurring. That was one element of the previous peer tutoring that the students felt very strongly about holding on to is that when you are matched with a peer tutor, you are usually matched with them long-term. That's not to say that we don't have like single sessions and quite a few walk-ins actually. But a lot of this, ninety-four, are, are appointments that happen every week. I have a star next to forty-seven, just to let you know that when we had peer tutoring last year, there were forty-seven peer tutoring pairings for the entire year. This is just from one month. And then for our REACH data right now, we have two students formally in the REACH program. There's a little asterisk there because we are only twenty days into school. And when we're talking about tracking chronically absent intruant students, like we really don't have enough days to make that determination. The two students that are in REACH have a check-in and a check-out with me. They get a big dose of tubs every day. And I'm seeing them and they know, they might not always be happy to see me or Lou or Omar, but one thing that they cannot deny is that they know that we are on their team and that we are committed to them succeeding. So as this number goes up, as the year goes on, it's been really nice to have sort of this time to get the kinks worked out of the system and know what the intake process is going to be. And so we'll continue to put data points like these in front of you. My goals moving forward for the program. I'll be honest, when I launched this program, I was like, okay, I'm just going to give myself semester one to get some momentum and get some, like get some staff engaging in this. I had no idea how quickly it was going to take off with the staff and the students. So I, my goals have adjusted since then because that was my one and only for the whole semester. And I think we're good. So I have continued engagement. I would love to see peer tutoring strengthen the school culture around students helping students and that it's okay to ask for help just as much as it's okay to give help. Reduction in chronic absenteeism, I think, is a huge goal for us. And I would love to see that come to fruition. Improve student performance, I'll talk about that in a second. Right now, I can put a lot of numbers in front of you that guarantee engagement. A lot of people are using the system. The next logical step is, is it working in a, in a way that we can really see in school performance data? And finally, my final goal is a clear and common understanding of tier-one in terms of what does good classroom instruction look like. I just came out of three years in the tier-one world as a curriculum instruction and assessment coach. And so I'm hoping that by clearly defining tier-two via this system, that we'll be able to have some real meaningful conversations about what sort of support should really be part of the tier-one classroom instruction. And thus, you shouldn't be kicking them to me and my support. So that's my long-term goal for this program. Any questions? Sorry, I didn't stop for questions after the last slide I was in a roll.
Can I just make a comment?
Yes.
Because, you know, when you said that you kind of had a lower kind of expectation on engagement. I think giving credit where credit is due because there was a visionary kind of process that went into creating the conditions for all teachers and kids to be able to easily engage. So I just want to make sure that that might have been your very modest goal. But I think you created by creating the intake form and systematizing the process, you created the conditions for, that just fosters engagement for all stakeholders. So thank you for that.
I appreciate you saying that. I think, you know, it's a system, but it's a system of people. And so making sure that the system was something that worked for students and for teachers was of the utmost importance to me as I was crafting it. Also being responsive to feedback, which I think I've been pretty okay about. The staff is very communicative about elements of the system or the form that they find confusing or things that should be adjusted. And I try as much as I possibly can with the twenty-four hours in a day to, to make those adjustments. And then periodically, I will send out an email. I try not to send too many emails because people stop reading them when it's like high pork colio time. And like when there's a lot of tubs emails, I stop sending. I limit myself to a couple a day. But I will, every once in a while, send an all-staff email that says, okay, I heard your feedback, these are some adjustments that I made. So yes, trying to keep everybody happy because it is a system of people at the end of the day. So data to expect from us at subsequent meetings. As I said, right now, I can guarantee you engagement. The numbers show that pretty clearly. But how does that translate into improved student performance? So moving forward, in subsequent presentations, you'll see the number of recommendations for academic study halls aggregated by department, the ones that have them. You'll see the number of students receiving support in the student center. These students are hard-scheduled in. And so really, that's where counseling and special services really shine because they are the ones that I am going to for the more holistic overview for these students that gets them hard-scheduled into the student center. I mean, thanks for viewing. Lies. No, that's a much important slide. Oh, okay. You'll see the number of requests for peer tutoring aggregated by department, which might be kind of faulty because one of the main tenets of the peer tutoring program is, yes, you want to lead with the, with the subject that the student is there for. But if you get that work done and you get them to a good place and then you find out that they have a fourteen in social studies, then you need to turn to that as well. So it might not be as clean of, clean of data as we would like. But I'm going to attempt to put in front of you the number of requests aggregated by department. We'll give you updated data on REACH and snapshot in semester one grades by department, which will really allow us to draw those lines that I'm sure we will see of the effectiveness of this system as it translates to improved student performance. We will also periodically, as I did in the prior slide, contrast this with prior year's data when it's appropriate to sort of give us clear perspective and context. However, this is the data that you can expect from me and/or Lou and other people at previous meetings, or previous, sorry, subsequent meetings. Any questions?
The number you said that there was about twenty-five-hundred forms submitted?
Yes.
What's the breakdown of student initiating those forms, parents and teachers?
So as of right now, we don't have parents initiating them because you need an Eosmith email address to submit the form. However, that is easy data for me to find for you. How many are student-initiated versus staff versus support staff?
Listen, can I, I had asked Dave for some of that.
Yes, perfect.
So, but this is from, this was seventeen, seventeen days in. So the data at that point was, so the number was a little bit less. But there were seven hundred and seventy-three total teacher referrals and three hundred and one student referrals.
I will say, right. It's like, wow, I don't know that many students.
I don't expect that many students to like want to go.
So I will say too that there are some teachers, especially teachers of freshmen, that are really trying to use the intake form as sort of like a vehicle to practice self-advocacy. And so they are on my little recording sheet that I have by teacher. It's very low for the, for the teacher themselves putting in the ask referrals. But that's because that they are really encouraging the students to put it in. Lots of errors, lots of forms submitted incorrectly. But I'm willing to die on the hill along with that teacher and like help them figure out those errors because I think that it's valuable. But I can get you some ongoing data for that moving forward.
I think the other, the other data point is the peer tutoring piece.
Oh, yeah.
Again, this was seventeen days in, but there were seventy-one teacher-initiated and fifty-five student-initiated, which I think sends a really strong message to the fact that they're advocating for themselves to collaborate with peers.
So as far as your snapshots, semester one grades, if this is rolling out at the beginning of the year, which is going to be your control as a comparison to whether or not this is successful in terms of grades. Because if you're starting to begin, you're starting with enrolling. Are you comparing it to last year?
We are, we will compare it to last year because it's all we've got, understanding that it's pretty much apples and oranges. But, but it's the best we have in terms of, in terms of data.
Okay. And do you feel as far as, oh, I agree, the number of requests aggregated by department?
Yeah.
And it just seems to be in peer tutoring. Are you going to do that all throughout or just in peer tutoring?
So we'll do that for, for academic study halls, for peer tutoring. The student center, I can't because it's more holistic in nature. And most of that is coming from counseling. And then the stat count and semester grades.
Okay. Because I feel that would be, it'd be an important piece of data that you wouldn't see if there were any shortfalls in departments if the one department's skyrocketing and blah-blah. There might be things to address in that quarter.
Absolutely. And those conversations are already sort of being had at the department level. It is very interesting. When I first rolled out this system, everybody was like, yay! In departments, they were like, this is so great, it's easy to use, everything's right out there. And I said, I, I love the enthusiasm, please hold on to it because it's a system and we will all chafe within it eventually. And so even me, it's happened. So those conversations are already starting to be had. I think what's important is that we are actually having those conversations and they are informed, data-driven conversations now instead of working off of hunches, which is, you know, which happens a lot and shouldn't, so.
And to your, to your parent, we've had a lot of conversations at the leadership level around, you know, this data and how it connects to conversations that we've had at the personnel level and at these board meetings around the snapshot and the semester one data and being able to make some, some aligning there. I think the challenge is going to be in something that we're going to have to wrap our brain around, something that we have talked at leadership about, is the grading piece. The grades that we see actually are a really important informational point because there are some teachers or some departments that we might see fewer recommendations for support. But if their grades reflect that their tier one interventions or classroom-level interventions are working for kids based on student performance data, you have to look at that whole picture. So a smaller number of referrals doesn't necessarily mean that it's a bad thing if the class grades indicate that the classroom instruction is working for the individual, individual students and the performance shows that.
Yeah.
Those will be things that we, that we talk about.
Yeah. I agree with those. There's no four, your first intervention in the grade.
Morning.
So what percentage of the academic study hall visits are for reassessment?
So I could also find you that data because I asked that question in the form. It's the question everybody gets the most annoyed about because nobody likes to fill out a form. And I said to the staff, if I'm going to, every question that I added to this form when I was building over the summer, I had a crisis of self. You can ask leadership because I, I literally cried every time I had to add a question. So I'm like, it's one more click. And so most of the questions in the form will either push an action like an automated email or push you to a different section of the form, so they're perceived as valuable. If there's one question where you just have to check the reason for the intervention, everybody's like, ah, every time, but that's what it's for. So I'll be able to get you that data.
I got another point. Going back to the grading pilot, you recall, there's five categories where departments could choose at discretion on how they would continue grades. That will factor in as we look at grades as well. So how did this department decide to handle this? What are your, what are your outcomes? So to have this pilot in place at this time is key. So we can be able to assess and analyze the differences in departments and where we want to be consistent and where not being consistent is okay. I just wanted to make sure, could that, put the grading pilot, keep that in front of you as that factors in moving forward.
And I will be offering professional development to the staff around student center topics and best practices done and trends I'm seeing emerging. It's just too early for that right now. I'm just trying to homogenize practices and how we're all using it. But moving forward, when those needs arise and bubble up and those trends become clear, I will, I will put my CIA hat back on and, and deliver some professional development to the teachers around that too. Because I think that there are some, there are some teachers that are really effectively using this system right now. I was just telling Lou that we have a first-year new teacher in science and she uses the system a lot, probably more than anybody else in her department. And then when the student assistance team DNF list came out for the sophomores and seniors, I was looking at them and her name was nowhere, nowhere on that list. And she teaches almost exclusively sophomores and she teaches them chemistry. And I'm like, this is amazing. This, like, this is a teacher that needs to tell her colleagues how she is leveraging this system in these academic study halls because she and her students are finding success with it. But it's still a little bit too early for that, but I will start knocking on people's doors when I see, when I see it.
Any other questions?
I just want to say really quickly, as a student who is literally in academic study halls.
I want to call you out, Chrissy.
No, it's all right. I think this is a really, really great system. And also saying this as a student who's been in the student center since I was a freshman. Like I've had at least like, like one student center study hall since freshman year and this system is so much easier to follow. Like it's much more concrete and like, that's not, that's not necessarily even a bad thing. It's just the way that everything is so much easier to find. And it's much, like the, the environment is very controlled and there's always like, I was there and there were two peer tutors that were helping students like literally right then. It's just such a great environment, I think. And it's like, it's, I'm always productive when I'm in the student center. So I just want to say that as a student.
Chrissy, yeah, I love it.
Anyone else?
Just one more. I'm assuming you have some ability to tell us at some future point, how many individual students, total number of students have used some aspect of this process? Because your big numbers break down, then it's not every single student who attends E O Smith.
Correct.
At some point in time, it would be nice to know how many students took advantage of it. And it would be exciting to find out that 95% of the students took advantage of it at one time or another. Then it would be a truly universally accessible.
Absolutely. Right now, we're at 400, well, as of 9:00 AM, we were at 470 unique students that had received some sort of service from this, from this student, from this student. Yeah, yeah, it's a lot, it's a lot. Not all willingly, I just want to say that, but they're always happy afterwards. They are, they always like, they're always glad that they won. So, yeah. Thanks all very much. Awesome, thanks guys.
Thank you.
Yeah, of course.
Pretty cool. Okay, we can move on. Was there anything on the new business?
No, but there's Sarah.
Sarah.
Hi, Sarah. Nothing on the new business? Then we can go to our discussion items. First thing on there would be Gibbs and requests policy.
Yeah, I'm just going to ask you to take a look in your packet for that policy. We have an individual who is working with athletics to make a donation or a contribution to a scoreboard. We don't have anything official yet, but just in anticipation, I just wanted to make sure that you had that policy front center and that maybe take some time to review it between now and the next meeting. And perhaps we'll have a little bit more of a, of a formal proposal as to what that, what that should look like or what it's supposed to look like. I just wanted to put it in front. We don't have anything really, any specifics to discuss right now, aside from the fact that there's a person who is willing to, to make a pretty substantial donation to, it's actually partially fun, the scoreboard. So once we have that with Sarah, everybody just wanted to have that.
I, I did go through it and I do have, kind of change, not change, but something to add in respect to non-monetary donations. We indicate in paragraph A that superintendent should determine if his or her sole expression of their non-monetary donation was approved before the education and present the SEC, superintendent should accept or refuse any non-monetary donation. I think before it says that, there should be something that says superintendent determines that this does not require board approval, then superintendent can make that decision because that was inconsistent. Anything else on that? Okay, and then other additional discussion items. You want to put it to board three and there are currently twenty blocks available, December 7th or December 14th. Do people have preferences? I'm sure you do, it's just a question of which one is it? Everybody wants to make the first one.
Do you say the seventh?
I agree on the seventh.
I was going to say 14th because I have finals right on the seventh. Well, if the word's right, I'll send five to the seventh. Because that's Saturday. So it's not, it's not.
Yeah. There's food.
Yeah, sometimes.
Yes, well, that could work with the, that she was a soccer reporter that day and then we had ACT on the 14th, so either day, I mean, I'll make it work.
Is there, so I, I use those days because it's usually the first, one of the first two weeks. And next week gets us into the holiday, but if there's a different day, that works for both.
I kind of think earlier, seven.
Yeah, I mean, the seventh is fine, like the five-minute bed, because you don't want to.
Yeah.
But you can just separate it. Yeah, right. As long as you feed, you know.
Start spreading out.
Did we do it nine to twelve last time? Was it eight to twelve? Is that possible?
No, exactly. Nine to twelve?
Sure, nine to twelve on the seventh.
Eight to seven, so do we have a consensus of seven, four to nine to twelve? Okay, and then the next thing on there would be an executive session. Because we do have something to discuss. So if somebody wanted to make a motion to move to executive session? I think so. So if there's a second, then it's a second. Any discussions on that, all in favor? So we're going to the executive session.